Welcome and good evening to the December 3 meeting of the governing body. If I would call this meeting to order, if you will give your attention to Councilman Duncan, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
You go, no, you go to the podium. Thank you, Mayor. As this is December, and now, as we, everyone knows, we do this on a rotation, being my fifth year, this is about the seventh time I think this has come around to me. And since it's December, which is a time for a lot of us, for family, I have convinced this month, very begrudgingly on their part, for members of my family to come and give the invocations this month. So, we're starting off with the people who live in my household, which will be my wife and my son. My son Connor is an 11-year-old who's a fifth grader at Topeka Collegiate. His probably strongest is his thumbs because of all the video game playing he does, but he's also a pretty good athlete. He's put up with me as his baseball coach, one of them, for the last couple of years. He also plays soccer and basketball, and even though he's only in fifth grade, he was able to be on the middle school basketball team this last year, and he'll be on the soccer team, and he'll be on the basketball team this year. Keeps telling me he wants a YouTube channel, so maybe we can make this his first clip, right, as he does this this evening, and put it up there. My wife Barbara, we celebrated our, I think it's our seventh wedding anniversary this year, that sounds about right.
Oh, my God.
I made sure that her, I made sure that our wedding was the day before her birthday, so that I'm either gonna forget them both, or never forget either, that way it's a little easier to remember. She's a partner and a senior wealth advisor at Clayton Wealth Partners. She's also president of the Friends of the Topeka Symphony. The biggest conflict in our house is we are a double house divided. She is a Topeka High graduate, I am a Topeka West graduate, I am a K Uer, she is a K Stater. So, that's our biggest challenge, and so if that's as bad as it gets, good for us. But before I turn it over to them, I will say, and I know we all say this a lot, but here's my chance while they're here to say it in public, I can't do this without them. I think any of you know, if your spouse or the people who live in your house aren't willing to know that you're gonna be gone every once in a while, aren't understanding when you have to rush out of the house or miss something once in a while, it's not worth doing it, right? And so, without that support, I couldn't be here and serve. So, while they don't come to all these meetings, they definitely are the reason I am allowed to come to all these meetings. And so, I thank them for that, and with that, I will turn it over to them for the invocation.
Connor.
Before you start your meeting, I would like everyone to think about how we can all make our community better with kindness, and by working together, we all can improve Topeka if we work with each other, not against each other. Now, here is my mom.
Good evening. Please bow your heads. As we gather here this evening, let us take a moment to reflect on the responsibilities we share in this space. May you approach your discussions with open minds, respect for one another, and a commitment to making decisions that benefit the greater good of our community. Seek understanding in your dialogue, empathy in your actions, and integrity in all that you do to find solutions for the community. And please, continue to give them all the patience necessary to work with my husband. Amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag of the back states of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, in whose resolve we live, liberty and justice for all.
That's one of the better invocations we've had.
Yes, it is.
I want to bring her back.
Yeah. I can't wait for the rest of the month to see what comes along with Mom and Dad.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on with the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hope.
Here.
All right, we have nine present with Valdivia Akala absent.
I'm not sure, please turn his camera off.
Move on to the appointments on agenda. Madam Clerk.
C, A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Sam Stahlbaumner to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals for a term ending December 6, 2026. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Christine Stahlkalmert to the Topeka Landmarks Commission for a term ending December 31, 2027. C is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Jason Jones to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term ending December 3, 2026. D is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Carlos Cortez to the Metropolitan Topeka Airport Authority Board for a three-year term ending November 30, 2027. And E is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Spencer Dunkin approving the members of the Landbank Board of Trustees.
Okay. We've heard the appointments as read by the clerk. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Cal, second by Councilman Dobler. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Hope.
Yes.
All right, we have eight yes, motion carries.
Okay. Motion's carried, and I'll ask Stahlbaumner, Steinker, Jones, Cortez, who I know is here, if you will stand so that we can recognize you and thank you for stepping forward and taking our service with the city. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on. Madam Clerk, to the consent agenda, if you'll read, please.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez removing certain real property from the dynamic core redevelopment district. B are minutes of the regular meeting of November 19, 2024, and there are no applications.
Okay. Heard the consent agenda is read, is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Dover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Banks. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes. It was created.
Sorry. Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hiller.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, action items. Madam Clerk.
A is approval of the amendment number one to contract number 52270 between the City of Topeka and Downtown Topeka Foundation specifying the rights and responsibilities related to the ice rink project.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. I will ask Amanda Stanley, City Attorney, to lead us through the slide.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This is an amendment to the agreement with the Downtown Topeka Foundation regarding the ice rink. They brought their proposal to the transient guest tax committee chaired by Councilwoman Hope. I'm happy to turn it over to her if you have any questions, but it basically extends the timeline. They need some additional time in order to complete the project.
Councilwoman.
Basically, it comes down to their sponsors are not quite, don't have their ducks in a row, and they still are planning to do this, they just need more time to get everything ready. So, unfortunately, we won't have an ice rink this year. It will be next year. So, hopefully, very early in the year, we can get everything figured out and get moving on it, start, and it won't, we won't have to deal with the temporary cost, there were just a few of those. It will strictly be the permanent basis. It'll be the permanent rink that will go in. I don't know when yet. They're gonna get back to us and let us know on that, but right now, it's just they're asking for more time to get their money and funding all set.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cal.
And if I remember right, there was this, in essence, there was a confusion on the year of what year it was gonna be, and so they wanted to amend it with the correct year of, for expectation, because the, it was gonna be like July, January 1st of 2024, which realistically wasn't gonna happen. Even if they went at it full bore, starting today, it wasn't gonna come close to being happening, but they just wanted to make sure the paperwork was in order, so everything was going fine with us.
Do you think further? Okay, we've heard the section item up for approval, is there a recommendation?
I'll move for approval.
Okay. Motion to approve by Councilman Hope, second by Councilman Cal, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Banks.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
And Ortiz.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion being carried. We'll move to action item B. Madam Clerk.
B is authorizing a public hearing date of December 17, 2024, for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed amendments to the 2024 operating budget.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. I'll ask Josh Beckenarney, our Budget and Finance Division Director, he's not here, will take any questions that you may have.
Is Josh here?
He's not, but we'll take questions.
Okay.
He's gonna pretend to be Josh.
All right. All right. Okay, you've heard the item. Anyone from the council?
Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler.
Second.
I'll second if I have a question before we move on.
Okay. Second by Councilman Duncan. Go ahead, sir.
So, this would be to hold the hearing on the 17th, which gives us, if we have a couple of questions about these between now and then, the email staff, or ask them at that hearing date, right? I don't have a lot, but I have one or two small.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So, we'll make sure there was time, so. That was it.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Just for the discussion today, though, if I read through that, these are things that are being adjusted, basically as balancing items, because, for instance, more revenue is coming in, so it needs to be budgeted for expenses, or we're not really adding anything new.
Yes, that is correct, Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was out.
Okay. Anything further? We have a motion and a second to approve. Oh, Councilman Duncan.
That's not technically true, there's some new stuff worth spending. I mean, I don't have an issue with that, but like, we had to, I mean, part of this is because of services for VP in switch, which we didn't originally have because of issues with security risk. I mean, that's a new expense. So, there are some new, what I would call new expenses in here. They're definitely related to existing, like, we're not buying new cars or anything, but yeah, so I mean, I think there are some new expenses, if you will, if I read through it right.
Correct. I guess to clarify, you're not adding any taxing authority with the budget hearing, so you're not raising taxes, you're, to, yes, there's new expenses, but it's a balancing of the books with existing revenue.
Sure. Gotcha. Perfect.
Good.
Good question. Okay. Any further? If you call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Cal.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
And Banks.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, motion carries.
Motion being carried, we move to non-action items on the agenda. Madam Clerk.
A is discussion of operational funding agreement between the City of Topeka and the Topeka Performing Arts Center, T-PAC.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, members of the governing body. Jason Tryon, our Division Director of, or Deputy Director of Public Works, will lead us to this item.
So, what you have before you is a contract with Topeka Performing Arts Center. This is a continuation of our existing relationship. There's very few changes to the agreement. We made some minor changes to reflect some layout changes within the structure, but for the most part, this is a continuation of the existing relationship we've had with T-PAC for many years. It's a two-year contract with two additional renewal periods associated with the contract if the city chooses to continue that relationship. And I'll take any questions. Also, the Executive Director of T-PAC is here as well, if you have any questions for him.
Okay. Any questions from the governing body? Okay. Marcus, I want to make sure that you hear us. Do you have any questions on this item?
Not at all, thank you very much.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of questions. I appreciate all the material that's been provided. It's the first time we've had that much in a long time, and I won't belabor this evening with them, but I'm gonna try and get together with folks and ask those questions, and that conversation between now and, I guess, next week. Is that right? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Duncan.
So, I guess just to clarify, I mean, as I've read through it, really, this is 99% or 95% the same exact contract we've had since this arrangement. The Board of Trustees. The difference is, we've just slid the guarantee of what we've been giving, which is $150,000 in the budget every year, to put it in this contract, so they can budget accordingly without having to sweat our budget process every year. Are they gonna get it, or are they not gonna get it? They at least know, we promised them $150,000. I mean, as far as I can tell, that's pretty much the only significant change from what we've passed the last.
That's correct. There are a few minor things, like I said, related to the layout of the building that have changed through the construction, but that is the main operational change. It's the same amount of funding that's been received in the past, but now it will be guaranteed for two years with an option for two, two-year renewals as well.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, Jason. Move to non-action item B. Madam Clerk.
B is discussion concerning a non-exclusive franchise to American Medical Response to operate an ambulance service within the City of Topeka until December 31, 2025.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the governing body. Chief Phillips will take us through this item and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is just the annual renewal, or discussion tonight about the annual renewal of the franchise agreement. It's on a yearly basis with AMR. There are just a couple of minor changes for next year. One of them is, so, we've had language in there for some time where if they request our assistance from our personnel for a lift assist that's not related to a 911 call, we're upping that fee amount from $200 per instance to $250 for next year, which they've agreed to. Also, we've clarified language that in the event that we have a working structural fire or large-scale emergency and we request a medical standby, that if available, they'll provide an ALS-level ambulance for that medical standby. And just to have the franchise agreement in line with municipal code, is that the fee that they have to pay each year for the ambulances that they operate within the city, that that will be paid by January 1 of each year rather than April 1. That just puts the franchise agreement in line with what's in municipal code. And those are the, those are the changes. So, if you have any questions, I'll be, try to do my best to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? Councilwoman Hope.
Since I was just in this position in the last week, how does the, my cousin fell, had to be lifted by firemen, and then the AMR people helped also to get him on the gurney, how does that work through? You charge AMR and AMR charges my cousin through his insurance?
So, if that, if that call originates through 911, whether they end up being injured or not, or needing transport to the hospital, we do not charge AMR, and they, and I'll let, they have representatives here, they want to clarify their billing on how they handle it when they treat somebody, they see them, they don't transport them. But we do not charge them if it arises out of a 911 call, or if somebody ends up being injured and requiring transport or not. This is be more like if they, say, had a transfer, and it was a larger patient, and they needed our assistance, but it's something that did not arise out of a 911 call.
Okay. That helps explain that. The other question, we brought it up, and now I can't remember what I, that one's gone. If I think of it, I'll ask you later.
Okay.
It was a broken leg, and, oh, that's what it was. It was an emergency. It was a bad break. How do, you know, we had problems getting people there, but when I called in, my, how do I explain it? When they asked what the emergency was, and I told them it was most likely a broken hip, broken leg, they transferred me, was I transferred to a, and they said, is it a medical call? And I said, yes. Did they transfer you to a medical person? Is that part of the program we set up before?
So, that, so, and I don't want to speak out of turn without the dispatch center being here, but, so when you dial 911, that call is originally answered by a county dispatcher within the CECC. If it's a medical call, it is then transferred over to AMR's dispatchers that are in that same facility, and they work through the EMD or Emergency Medical Dispatching process with that caller, and then assign the right resources based on that. Currently, the county dispatchers do not do the EMD process. That's, the call is transferred over to the AMR dispatcher, and they perform the EMD piece.
Okay. That explains it, because it sounded like I was transferred, but I had no idea how that worked.
They are all in the same center and the same room, so.
Another situation where I got firsthand knowledge that I was hoping to never find out, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, how is the supplies handled? I mean, you know, I know we get there, and we start working on it if we need be, and then we wait on AMR. How are the supplies that we use?
So, as part of the contract with the county, for the first responder agencies that respond, when there's a list of certain supplies, it's part of that contract, that whatever we use, AMR replenishes back to us. So, usually that entails, say, for example, in that case, if we used a certain type of splint that both units carry, then when we get that, help them get that patient loaded in, they're, will say, hey, we use this and this, and they'll, they'll hand it off to our crew off of their unit, and then they replenish our medical bag.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm glad to see in the contract that we're charging them for lifting, because we've been doing that for a while. You know, I've seen on instances that we've done that, and we've helped them, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Got a couple short ones, I think they're short ones.
Okay.
We got the report on the EMS study just a couple of weeks ago, and I, in the process of talking about that, there was a discussion of requiring a minimum of AMR ambulances being available at any time in the city limits.
That was a recommendation made by Wichita State, yes.
Right. So, I just, I didn't see any reference to that. I figured they were kind of crossing in timeframe, but that's for further discussion, then.
Yeah, so, I don't want to speak out of turn, but that was, is something that probably would have to be addressed within a contractual item. So, whether that's the governing body having discussion with the County Commission prior to the next renewal of AMR's contract with the county, or if the city were to make the decision that they wanted to negotiate their own separate contract, that would probably have to be addressed in that, in that arena. That really wouldn't be, the franchise agreement wouldn't be the place or time to be able to address that.
Okay. So, we're really not looking at the major piece, because that's what the county.
Well, we're a little bit limited in what we can and can't put into the franchise agreement because of the existing contract with the county for AMR to provide ambulance service.
Thank you. Yeah. I've had some outside folks ask some questions, so I was in touch with Josh about what revenue we were getting, and he listed for 2023 and 2024, just a $1,500 base application fee, what he called it, and then $4,400 in ambulance fees for 2023, and then $4125 for '24. It didn't include a listing of any billings or collection for lifting, I don't think. And then, I was trying to figure out what the $4,000 was, because on line 55, it now says, they inserted a word "new," and so there's supposed to be a 200 and, now $250, sorry, line 52, no, yeah, line 55. There was supposed to be an annual fee for each ambulance that was in operation in the city, but now it says each new line. So, is that gonna reduce our fee down to almost nothing?
That's not my understanding, but I would have to defer to legal.
Kelly's coming up.
Okay.
Mayor.
Mayor. I'm sorry. So, actually, if you look at lines 51 and 52, that's where the existing ambulance fee is. Chief mentioned earlier that we had to make a correction for consistency with the city code to make sure that they were paying that ambulance fee for existing ambulances on January 1, so we separate out the existing ambulance from the new ambulances. Okay. So, that's still at play. So, we would still get the roughly $4,000 a year for the ambulances? Okay. Well, and for what it's worth, he wasn't aware of any, any collection of the lifting fees.
We, we may not have had any this year. I think we only had, I want to say maybe two or three last year.
Okay.
That's not, that's not to say we've only went out two or three times in the last two years and helped with lift assist-type situations, but what the language allows for is lift assist situations when they don't arise out of a 911 call. The overwhelming majority of those arise out of a 911 call.
Makes sense, although, you know, raising the fee if we are hardly charging it, I guess it's still worth it. I just wanted to double-check. And that's all my questions.
Thank you. Further questions for the Chief? City Manager? Any minute? Okay. Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Didn't know AMR's here if they'd like to say anything, or if they'd like to stand. They do a great job down there.
Thank you. I've already had one council member offer me a little bit of money to keep this under two minutes, so if anybody's got more, we can make it 30 seconds.
I can tell you who that is.
Now, I just appreciate the opportunity to be here, stand in front of you guys again, John Antrim Regional Director for GMR, to continue our service in the community. I know, Councilwoman Ortiz, you came to our 40-year anniversary celebration this year, so it's a great milestone for us, for serving this community. So, I have, answer any questions? I think he answered your question very well. There is not a charge if we did not transport the patient, so if we just assisted with the lift assist, then we don't charge for that either. And we typically try and do our own lift assist on our transfers when we can, to avoid the fee, obviously, but there are still times that we have some very large patients in our community that would do require some assistance, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. We have one gentleman signed up, Mr. Lazon Grace. Lazon?
I had, I attended your State of the Community event several weeks ago, which I was very optimistic and, and optimistic after the event, especially when you had mentioned something about be bold, you know, so I figured I'll be here and be bold. On August 7, I sent the email to you all about the equitable workforce development requirement within the bipartisan infrastructure law. There were no questions, no follow-up, no nothing. I came back on September 3 with the copies of everything to hand out to everyone. There were no questions, no comments, no follow-up, no nothing. Thank you, Mayor, for the time that you met with me on this particular issue. I appreciate that. I left that meeting optimistic, but that was the end. This is now, there's been no questions, no follow-up, no nothing. Now, I'm not trying to ask for anything that, because I want it. This is written within your infrastructure law. I'm making sure that there are an equitable workforce development pathway for underrepresented populations in the city. Now, the recommendations that I've made in the documents that maybe you did not read, of those who have resources to bring to the table, paying for tools and other things, they're sort of sitting in wait because I have to wait for the city to do something because the beneficiaries of whatever's put together are going to be those citizens of the city of Topeka. I'm hoping that there's some elected leadership that will say, hey, Mayor, I'll get with Lazon, we'll get to the bottom of this, get your report, and get it all my, get it all our colleagues. If not, I would like to ask you to use your executive authority of designating someone to meet with me on this, see if it's something valid or not, if it is, to move things forward. The, I'm not trying to do anything for myself specifically. There is a large opportunity for all the monies that will be coming for infrastructure projects under this bill, and I do again reemphasize that the priority is for underrepresented populations to be a part of the training and the jobs, as well as the contractual work that's going to be done on every project funded by the infrastructure. And so I'm hoping somebody will be a voice for this underrepresented population. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm right on what I'm trying to get done. I would like to see someone follow through on this, so we can have this meeting with the other stakeholders who are bringing resources to the table, and some type of a leadership from the elected body. Thank you.
Thank you, Lazon.
I have a, well, I guess my minute's over.
Did you still have some comments? You had time left.
Well, yes.
Yeah. You still had a minute or so, I think.
I'm sorry. If there are any questions, or if there's anyone who wants to say, sure, I will do this, then I would like to hear that before I leave. If you would like to designate someone from your staff to do something, I would appreciate
Thank you, Lazon.
Nice place.
Okay, there's no one else signed up. We'll move to the announcements. We'll start with Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. This, I guess just a few days ago, or Friday, I guess it was, we had the Creedy Holiday Spectacular, which Jeff Creedy and his wife came back for the third year in a row at T-PAC, and he's a hometown boy made good over there on New York and Broadway, and his wife, so it was a great show. It was Masonic Lodge 17, and Walmart and I were able to partner together to provide about 130 families with some free tickets, the Boys and Girls Club and a few others, so I was glad we could do that for the community. Hopefully, they bring that show back in the next year or two, and people can continue to go to it every holiday. I have office hours again this Sunday at 3 o'clock for all those interested. Festival of Trees will be over by then, so if you're hoping to do dual, it's too bad, you got to go Saturday, though we all picked up by Sunday. Last night was my last meeting. I've been termed out. For the last six years, I served on the Police Citizens Academy Board. I went through that program about eight years ago, was glad to serve on the board and help kind of push that program the last few years. I encourage everyone, we now have that program for our fire department, we've got a similar program in our public works department, and I would encourage all citizens to take as many of those as possible. They are not, as I tell people, and they ask, oh, you're just going to tell us what you want us to hear. And I tell them, no, actually, they are very transparent. All those programs will let you ask all the questions you want to ask, and in fact, they encourage that because they want everyone to leave those programs having a better understanding of how things work and making sure that all those questions do get answered. So those are free every year. They do a couple each year, so I would encourage everyone to watch for those and apply. And then the last thing is, Thursday is Topeka's birthday. We're 170 years old, so happy birthday to Topeka. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'll add to the list. We have started the holiday season. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving holiday, however they celebrated it. First Friday's coming up. It'll be the holiday First Friday. Encourage everybody to get for that. Chocolate Nutcracker is Friday later that evening. Spencer mentioned Festival of Trees is going. Zoo Lights has started up. Nativities and Noel's is going on. There is plenty to do, and that's just a starting list. I encourage everybody to get on Facebook and look for events or the Visit Topeka site and get out and about and enjoy these times. And just to wrap up, I try and do this each year, and just wish everybody a great holiday and their families and whoever is watching, understanding that for some of us, that's a season that's totally a season of sharing. For others, it's a time of reflecting for whatever has happened in our lives, and for others, it's a time of work. So people are working, and whatever that balance is for each and everyone, I wish them a happy holiday season.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Nothing.
Councilman Banks.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kell.
Kind of piggybacking a little off of what Councilwoman Hiller said and with Councilman Duncan earlier, I consider this more family season than holiday season. You get to spend a lot of time with your family and your adopted families, and so just cherish those moments, because sometimes you're not going to always have that. Toys for Tots is going on right now. My family, for a couple of different years, were recipients from Toys for Tots, and it's something that I always try to give back to now that I'm in the position I am. And their bins will be out until the 6 locally, so this Friday, but you can still drop them off at the mall. They'll be doing the distribution at the mall. If you want to get signed up, there is, there's a website to get signed up for if you want to volunteer. Distribution Day is the 20th, 21st, 22nd, I believe, that Friday, Saturday, Sunday. This Saturday is the Miracle on Kansas Avenue Parade. There's a tree lighting, the parade. You can live stream it. Saturday's supposed to be some pretty good weather, so you can get out there and check everything out. As Councilman Duncan said about the Citizens Academy, I think that's something that is very neat. I actually recommend that all our council members and as much staff do it. I did it with a couple council members and some staff members, and the Citizens Academies are really informative, and it's a great way for our staff members to learn about other departments and for us to learn what we're dealing with up here, but it's also good for the citizens to learn what's going on behind the doors of police department, the fire department, the public works. So if you ever do get a chance, get signed up for those. And finally, as I say, it's family season, but it's also crazy driving. People just fly around the mall, Walmart, everything, just go through the parking lot 30, 40 miles an hour. Please slow down. It gets dark earlier. It's hard to sometimes stop when a child or someone's popping out, especially like Saturday when it was snowy and wet and things, so please slow down out in the parking lots. It's not worth hitting someone just to try to get your errands and your Christmas list done sooner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Miller.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dobler.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think a lot of the highlights have been mentioned by council members here about what's going on in the city. So we want to make sure that we don't miss an opportunity to attend those that we can. Madam Clerk, do you want to give us the highlight for next?
So on December 6, a special meeting budget retreat of the governing body has been called by City Manager Robert Perez on December 6, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Hotel Topeka City Center Emerald Ballroom that's located at 1717 Southeast Topeka Boulevard in Topeka to discuss budget items. If necessary, the governing body may recess into executive session under applicable exemptions as allowed by KSA 75-4319B. The meeting will not be televised due to technical difficulties, and there will be no public comment allowed at the meeting. Written comments may be submitted via email to cclerk@topeka.org or delivered in person to the City Clerk's Office located at 215 Southeast 7th Street, City Hall Basement Room 12B here in Topeka. And then on December 10, we have three board appointments. We have one presentation for domestic violence prosecution update, the consent agenda. We have one resolution for the 2025 governing body meeting schedule, the city boundary resolution for 2024. Action items include an operational agreement for T-PAC. We have discussion and possible action on the resolution for the Citizen Government Review Committee. We have an ordinance for the AMR franchise renewal, discussion with possible action on ordinances for the downtown BID, the NODO BID, and then the Topeka Tourism BID. We will have three resolutions amending the CIP, actually four resolutions amending the CIP. The first one's for traffic signal replacement, 2024 Neighborhood Infrastructure Dreams, one project. We have the 2025 program projects, and then we have, the last one is the 2023 Infill Sidewalk Plan. We also have one additional action item on the December 10 agenda as a result of a funding request received today from Hotel Topeka. It will be a resolution authorizing a funding request for Hotel Topeka operations and maintenance in the amount of $72,343.54. There will also be a TDC board meeting prior to the governing body meeting on December 10. Action items include the 2024 budget amendments for discussion, common consumption area amendment, and then the Topeka Dreams, 2025 Topeka Dreams program funding. That's it.
I'm sorry I asked.
That was longer than the meeting. Longer than the meeting.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In listening to the conversation around the dais, I just wanted to point out and give a shout-out to all of our City of Topeka employees who actually worked over the Thanksgiving holiday and the weekend. I got to spend some time with some of our firefighters from Stations 3 and 7, just out and about, and just letting me know how busy they were over Thanksgiving, and definitely we had our public works and utilities crews out helping descend and whatnot. And so while we got to enjoy a safe holiday or safe Thanksgiving, I just want to acknowledge the work of a number of our staff members and just want to let them know I appreciate them for the dedication. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And just to reiterate, we brought it up during our press conferences, that in addition to those public servants who are out there doing the job while we're enjoying ourselves, there's a lot of citizens in the City of Topeka, like the grocery store workers and the nurses and everybody else who keeps things available and resources ready for us as we try to enjoy the holidays. When you get a chance, thank them for being there. I know I did it a couple of times, and it kind of took people by surprise that somebody would say, hey, thanks for being here today, but it really goes a long way, you know? Show a little appreciation for everything that happens, like this evening with the AMR representative there. Everybody has to have those kinds of people who are dedicated to working regardless of the holiday, because they know it's essential for us. Thank you to everybody. I appreciate this, and I don't think that we have any executive session? No, good. No further business come before this body? This meeting is over.